Alright guys, it's 5:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and kick our work session off. I do wanna first start by saying there was an incorrect agenda that went out, and hopefully everybody got the updated one that's here before us. So we do apologize for that, but Shannon did send out the updated agenda. So hopefully everybody got the updated copy. So I am gonna ask Blaine Green to open us up in prayer tonight if that's okay. Thank you Blaine, we appreciate that. Alright, first on our agenda is Walter Lewis to discuss investing GEO warrant funds. I don't see Walter. He may be running late, Shannon, he can burn tonight. So we'll just push him down the list and we'll come back to Walter when he gets here. Next on our agenda is Fire Chief Nate Ogden to discuss the budget amendment for travel and training conference to employee expense. I know this was on our last agenda, it got pushed, but you're here tonight to address it. So just tell us, tell us why we're having to amend the budget. I guess the question that I have is, is this an annual expense? Is this something that we didn't approve? Does something else get spent out of this line item? We gotta replace it? That's what I'm trying to see.
Yeah, so this is just, you know, with the added expense, first of all, the last big expense to come out of this line, which is our employee expense line item in our budget, is our annual physicals that we do for the fire department. When we had the added expense of the extra gear and I came and requested the $25,000, I just left the line just a hair too thin to cover all of the gear purchase plus the physicals. I should've come and asked for 28% of 25, but I didn't. So I'm just absorbing that into my budget.
Yeah, but I'm confused. This is why I'm confused, because we amended your budget for the 25, so we didn't pull it from anywhere as well. We just amended your budget by that amount.
Correct.
So whatever was in there should've still been in there.
Well, and in that email that I sent y'all, that we had a few items that just increased incrementally. So I think the exact total that I need to cover that expense is 1,700, but I'm moving 2,700 just to make sure that I've got some breathing room for the rest of the year.
Okay, so the line item that you're moving to 2,700, what's in that?
Yeah, so all of our travel, training classes, any of that stuff, it comes from that line. So basically, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, rob and peta, pay Paul.
I know, but that's the thing we're trying to get away from, because we don't wanna do that. Then we don't want you to come back in a couple of meetings asking for the 2,700 to replace the...
Well, I'm just gonna have to, you know, maybe down the road towards the end of the year, you know, somebody comes, puts in a training request and we can't do it this year, we have to push it next year, you know, it's just...
Alright, well let's just make sure we make some notes also on the increase that this year incurred, so that when we go to budget this time, we'll be able to put the incorrect dollar amount in here.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, thank you Chief. Alright, next on the list is Cassie Emerson to discuss the development and maintenance of the city website. Documents are attached for council review, and we have those, thank you Cassie. So I know we talked about this last meeting, so you went back and got a little bit more information and talked to some employees as well.
Yes ma'am, the council had asked me to check where the department is to see how logistically we're... Of course it depends on which member we go with exactly the setup, but I've got it listed out on that first page that I handed you just right before meeting, of who would have different access levels and what it would be for.
Okay, well thank you so much for this. I know I'm gonna have to take mine home and read over it, and if I have some questions you know I'm gonna call you.
Okay.
And does anybody have any questions on this now?
Not until I have time to look it at her.
So thank you so much Cassie for this information. I know you worked really hard on it, but we're gonna take this home, read over it, and call you about questions and we're gonna circle back on you. Thank you.
I'd mind.
Oh, go ahead, what did you say?
I need to mention the timeline on this.
She already gave it, she gave it to us last time there. Shannon, didn't you say number 16 was coming off because we didn't have a name for the employee?
No, it's a budget item, so it doesn't have to be approved by council. It's already been approved, and we won't know the names yet until the two people from the city base are picked and named.
Ah, okay, that makes sense. Alright, next on the agenda is Ms. Linda Dixon with the historical permission request and reimbursement to Tara Douglas for materials used in preparation for the Sulicaga Cemetery Tour during Marble Festival from Historical Commission's fund. The total reimbursement amount was $266 and 64 cents. Hey Ms. Linda, how are you tonight?
Good afternoon, and thank you. I think you just covered that beautifully, but we did have the opportunity to do a guided tour of our landmark cemetery in conjunction with the Marble Festival this year. This will be a continuing event, but as we were preparing the cemetery, we realized that there was some landscaping issues that would enhance, and this was just prior to the event kicking off. And we were doing this in conjunction with the commission, the historical commission, unification council, and of course Marble Festival committee. So Tara decided this would be enhancing, and she is also a commission member of the Historical Commission, and she purchased these. And I would just like to see her reimbursed. She has given so much of her time and effort. I hate to see her personal expense. And I think we did have a miscellaneous of 500 we admitted in our budget. And that would be wonderful if we could reimburse. And I do believe our guidelines do say that a member could be reimbursed.
So this is just basically something that the commission decided on, but one of the members ended up having to pay out of pocket and we just need to reimburse her?
Right, it was a weekend, no time for prude requisition.
Okay, and I don't see an issue with this, do y'all?
I'm good with this.
Shannon, I guess you can just get with Ms. Linda so that Tara can be reimbursed out of their cemetery fund.
Historical Commission has their own funds.
So, but are you asking for it to be reimbursed out of the...
I appreciate it.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Nice one.
Alright. Alright, is there anything else, Ms. Linda?
Looking forward to hear from the historic site grant that we applied for. They said we would here in May, but we're in June, so we're just waiting patiently for the Gags Quarry post office.
Well hopefully we get some good news soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you Ms. Linda.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda is Police Chief Rondell Meese to discuss a request to place rehire Officer Kyle Smith in PEC-1 Step 3. Officer Smith has eight years of experience, is FTO certified, and has five par years with STD.
Yes ma'am.
How are you tonight?
Good, and yourself?
Good.
Good. Not only with the experience that Officer Smith brings with us, I also decided to, for the first time ever, to emulate the fire chief and offer one step for every five that's already been previously established for the fire department.
Okay, so, but we haven't hired this person yet, this is...
No, he's working. He's in, but he's in the original step one.
I just got one question, which I mean, I think we should do this, this is a good idea, but why didn't we do this from the jump? Why didn't we consider this from the jump?
Because according to the way everything goes, if you go anything further, I would have to have council approval. I did write it down as Step 3, and I was told I would have to come before y'all.
Yeah, next time, maybe we should just go ahead and get it before the council once we, you know, consider people. If this is something that we are thinking about doing. I mean, we do wanna make sure we're improving good people to serve our city, but we also wanna pay them what they're worth.
And I'm glad you said that, because I do have two more in the pipeline, so I will be coming before you.
Just go and get it over with.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and do that sooner than later.
Step 3?
I mean, well, I don't know, I'm not telling you what step, but I'm saying, but if this is something you're gonna consider based on experience, let's just do it like when we're gonna make the offer.
That's right. You make that comment, you know what you've got left in your budget, you know what you need to get laser officers here.
And I did make the offer.
Yes.
But then I was correct, so that's why I'm before you.
I do have a question. I think it's a fantastic guy that you've hired. I'm great that we're, you know, hiring him at a higher amount, but is that gonna affect compression within other officers who were hired in before your tenure as police chief? What about the ones that were hired in as one and will be lower than him? Is that gonna affect anyone?
Well, this procedure has already been established before my tenure as police chief, and I'm only continuing it. Of course, compression can happen in any circumstance. That's just a factor of life, and I hate to say it. It's like John Ernst saying, "We all gonna die." It's what happens.
I just don't want to see any type of, you know, low morale from it. I just wanna make sure that everybody's been looked over.
Thank you Chief.
And hopefully, too, with that brand new pipeline we just implemented last year, hopefully everybody's where they're supposed to be.
And they are, they are.
Okay, so the next one is yours as well. So Police Chief Rondell Meese to request approval to surplus Lieutenant Willis Wally and Sergeant Donnie Lenders firearms.
On June 30th, that's over 60 years of experience walking out. So whenever there, Ms. Emerson tells me that their party's gonna be, we would like to present their firearms as established persons.
I know, and I really hate to see those guys.
Yes.
That makes me sad.
That's tough to see, Donnie. Donnie's been around a long time.
And I'd like everybody to come watch the legend walk out.
No doubt, no doubt.
There ain't anything you said. And happy, because he just said he enjoys retirement. Alright, thank you Chief, we appreciate you. Alright, next on our agenda is Steve Masters to discuss Sulicaga Little League softball lease agreement.
I wanna make a statement before, per my personal legal advisor, I've been told that I need to abstain from discussing invoke, and I will be stepping out, so I may display restraint or respect for the law. Per the Ethics Commission Act 3625-5 and 3625-11 and Advisory Opinion 2004-26 from the Alabama Ethics Commission, I'm abstaining to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. But I wanna be clear, I love and believe in both programs. I have two little girls that love softball, and I know y'all will make the best decision for everyone. And also, in the record, if you're campaigning while using a board seat to push your political agenda, you are a part of the problem. I will be stepping out from this discussion.
Alright, well, you know, I'm just...
Yeah, I'm here for the papers. I've been on both boards and I respect both boards.
I know your people appreciate you Laura. Alright, we'll wait for Laura to leave, and then we'll...
Here you go.
Go ahead Steve.
As y'all know, we attempted to do this at the last meeting, and people stepped up, and we scheduled a meeting on that Tuesday. I sent all of y'all minutes for that meeting. I don't think there's any need to rehash that information, but it is my recommendation, and our board is not involved in this whatsoever. This is Steve Masters' recommendation, that we extend an offer to Sulicaga Youth Softball for access to Wingard Park, to the buildings and the facilities surrounding it. I've, me and Will have been working together, we actually talked again today. We do feel like the buildings need to be gone through, because I don't think Sulicaga Youth Softball would be grandfathered into codes and problems with those buildings. So I think we need to gain access to the buildings. I think we need to get our building department involved and go through the building and see what improvements need to be made. I would recommend to y'all to extend the lease to Sulicaga.
And that's to Burrows, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, and I agree with that too. So Steve, well before I say anything, do y'all have any...
I have just a couple of questions.
Okay. You're okay with Steve's recommendation? So my only thing is, I guess we just, I guess you'll just have to set up something with the boys, the previous occupants, just to make sure that all their personal things are removed and probably like go about getting the locks changed and see what we need to do as far as the city park the right before we hand it over to them.
Yes ma'am, and one of our issues since we've started this process in January is knowing who that is, like who is on that board, so...
Well hopefully after making this decision, I'm pretty sure somebody's gonna step up and claim their stuff.
USM. But I think we need to set a timeline, we don't make to drag this out over and over again.
What's the timeline?
I would suggest...
That's one of my questions.
I would suggest 30 days. After July 4th.
But also, unless you need to make sure that anybody who takes something has a right to take it, not just people who go and...
I have a pretty good relationship with Keith Mayfield, Tommy Culver, the guys, you know, in the past who have ran this program. They're the ones who express the interest in preserving the history that is in that building, so we will definitely make sure that they're bothering the citizens.
There you go.
So we'll just be expecting that contract at the next meeting?
Ms. Lindsey, yes?
We did wanna leave a clause in there. We never wanna shut the door on a program that's been around for 50 years. Should that organization or another organization approach us that we feel viable, we've talked to the softball group, and they would be interested in a joint use agreement, much like we used with the high school with our tennis courts and Baybrook Field and things like that. So we can work this out if someone does step up and decide that this program can be viable again. But meanwhile, that building and those fields need to be insured and maintained.
That's right.
That was good, thank you so much.
I've got a question.
Yes ma'am.
Is the plan still to help them get everything back up? Partner with them, help them get their field back?
Yeah, I'm personally gonna help them, you know, 16 years of experience working on fields. I would recommend to the council that we hire a company to come in and help the laser level be in fields and put new base plugs and add new stuff like that.
We're gonna do both fields, right?
I would suggest that.
I agree with that.
It's not a real big expense, and I think it'd be a great step in ensuring that field's playable next year.
Yeah, I like that idea. And softball does a real good job with what they've done on their top field, so I feel good about this guys.
Is that something that you guys can handle in the parking brake budget?
We do it every three years. This is something we can take care of.
I'm excited now.
You've got a great job handling this, Steve.
Thank you sir.
Thank you Steve.
Alright, I see Walter just came in. How you Walter, how are you?
Good, y'all ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Awesome. Good afternoon, everyone.
Alright, so Walter Lewis to discuss investing the GEO warrant fund.
Yes, yes ma'am. I have had some really good conversations with Shannon as relates to this, you know, when he comes before you tonight. And what I wanna do is just really give you a high level view of what the thought process will be relative to invest in those funds. To me right now, the funds are in place, you had a 26, I mean a 24A and a 24B. I know there's been some construction work being going on out in the bay, and I've had a little bit of conversations with that. But you have those two funds. The main fund is the fund that's dealing with the recreational community center thing, you know, in terms of where the most money is. And I think in terms of what needs to happen, the council needs to give the go-ahead in order to actually execute that. And me personally, my role in this is oversee the whole process with architects, with the people that are invested in the funds, that'll be a group that's with Piper so-and-so for, timing and all those types of things. I'm gonna do that at no cost to the city. That's just me orchestrating that thought process.
You probably have to say this again, I'm sorry Walter. Will somebody go find Laura?
I just sent a text.
So that's, I think, just, there's some processes that need to happen on the city side. One is giving the go-ahead to actually execute this, where y'all can maximize your funds in terms of what you invest in those funds in. And if we can get that aspect out of taking care of, I can set up the things with Ryan Coleman, the architects, you know, construction workers, the city in determining when they want to use these funds for their community center so-and-so for. We gotta decide all those types of things, because if you decide, you know, when you're gonna start using the funds, that's gonna tell us how to lay out the investments where you can maximize the returns.
So that means we're gonna have to have another meeting, I guess, before, yeah, before that can happen. What is our timeline looking like? Because I know we wasted, we wasted, we wasted some time because of, you know, all the turnover and stuff.
Well, the timeline basically as it relates to how you invest.
Hey Walter, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. The timeline kind of goes into action when the city institutes this process, you know, there. And that's an unknown right now. And when that happens, that's how we'll build the case relative to the process of investing in funds.
So who all, so who all needs to be involved, like, in that meeting? Like, do you need to get the whole council? Do you need council mayor, so we can just see the timeline? And then the council make a decision? Like, what are the next steps if we need to...
I think there are some discussions that need to be, that need to go on with your architects, and how that side of it works, because you're gonna have to bid the project to a certain degree to figure out, you know, how much it's gonna cost. And that's gonna factor in, how you lay out the investments. And all that stuff works off of me, so, you know, to answer your question, yeah, there needs to be someone, I would suggest someone appointed by the city. I mean, it could be a council member, or it could be somebody else that can report back to you what's actually going on.
Well, I just need to know what parts, what all parts need to be a part of that meeting so we can get something together. Because I'm pretty sure Steve, Steve may need to be there. I know Ryan Coleman's gonna be there, the mayor of course, and Shannon, and I guess one of us.
Yeah, and I, maybe, and I'll have to ask Ryan Coleman this question. I would suggest it may, an architect may need to be there relative to that.
Shannon, you making a list?
Madam President, is this up for discussion?
Yeah, so it's just, it's a combination.
We can't consider it, I mean, we still have to just see if this is something we want to do, but we still need to know what exactly he's talking about. He's basically saying that while the money is sitting in the bank, our money can be making money.
Is it, I thought it was making money at this time?
No, it's not.
Because the way it was invested?
And I thought that up when we first did the bond about putting in a money market account.
Well, we did, but then Alex was in place and she was doing some stuff, but, I mean, we all know how that went. There hasn't been anybody in place who could drive.
But there are also restrictions on where you can put it, you can't earn it.
There are also restrictions on what you can invest the funds in. And yes, to your question, or your comment, the money was invested, but it was invested in a money market account. But there were yields out there that you could get better than a money market account, where you could've earned a little bit more.
You'll bring those numbers with you, won't you? Those percentages, what we're paying now and what you can find.
Oh, yeah, that'll be something that we can compare to, yes.
And how much does your company charge invest for us?
The company, it'll be probably our group in terms of investing. They can charge you based on, in this particular situation in terms of permitted investments, you're probably looking at five to 12 basis points, you know, in terms of cost. That it will not be, it will come out of the yield that you actually invest the funds in. If it's a treasury, you know, they'll skim their little bit off the top relative to that, and that's how they'll get profit.
They just wanna make sure that you're investing our money to make money for us and not really...
Exactly. Well, I'm not doing anything.
But you have to be careful with that.
But I got an email to me right now that I can forward to you guys, where you can look at that whole process, you know, there.
I just need to know what I'm making, what we're making now and what you do. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand, absolutely.
Alright, well, thank you for that information Walter. We'll try to circle back. Shannon did make a list of who all would need to be involved in...
When do you think we need to have the first meeting?
As soon as you wanna try to get the process going and that's the funds. And I don't think the initial meeting with the architects, I don't think that will be necessary with those guys. I think Ryan Coleman is good enough in terms of just, because he'll know how to communicate, you know, out there to the architects, you know, what needs to happen.
Okay, alright. And we'll probably just have to set up like a phone call meeting or something that first initial meeting. Alright, thanks Walter.
Thank you. Can I make one more comment then? Rose is up. And just having some discussions, you know, and I may be getting into city business or whatnot relative to, you know, to the building of the facility and all that kind of stuff. All those matters, you know, it's just a conglomeration of things you just need to deal with, you know, just to clear the slate so-and-so for relative to, you know, the facility and how it is placed so-and-so for. So it's just a lot of little things we gotta just work through.
Thank you Walter.
Thank you.
Alright. Next on the work session agenda is discussion by shelter manager Stephanie Ingle regarding the transfer of funds from the restricted donation account with balance of approximately $26,500 to budgeted 021 GEO line items. Stephanie, you wanna come to the podium? How are you tonight Stephanie?
Good, how are you guys?
I'm good. So I looked at this and I also talked to Shannon about it. I think my confusion is, I thought we had, I thought we had all your stuff set up to where you didn't have to come to the council to ask us to spend your money. You could just get a PO issued, but according to Shannon, she can't spend money out of this account that's set up for her.
And she can spend money out of the account, but because that line item in the budget has a zero balance budgeted, you know, on it, we can't do a PO. Our system won't let us. So for her to spend her money, we have to put a number on that line item.
Let me ask you, so, well, since it's restricted money, can you pull this restricted money and put it on that line item as long as it's spent first? It's still restricted. How many, how many accounts does she have?
I just have this restricted account, I have a 010 and a 021. The 021 account is the restricted funds account, and I currently have $32,350 in that account, thereabouts. So what I was trying to do, you know, I've got people donating for either sterilization of animals or for vet services such as, like, yesterday I had a woman call and she rushed this dog to us and it needed immediate surgery. So today we found the owner, but the point is we've got instances like that where we need to be able to spend money. So that's vet services.
And that's a way to make it easier, so you don't have to wait for us. Did you, did you ask Melody about this? Did Melody...
I cannot see Melody since this came up, she's helping in.
Alright, if you ask Melody about this, because my thing is, it's her money and she needs to spend it, and it is restricted, why all the money just can't be put on that line item? Instead of her coming back to us and we're, you know...
When I turn it... The thing that I'm confused about too is, like, every time I turn in money, I have a spreadsheet, so I have restricted columns that tells you exactly where the money should be going from that deposit that I made, like exactly where it should go.
Ms. Stephanie, refresh my memory. I thought, and I think we talked about it a little bit, I thought this account here, I thought we set up an account where you, this account here, you can come and walk in and just write the check and PO, hand it to you, go.
And then I was told that, you know, from the last time when Alex was here, that prior to any expenditure, city council must be...
Let's approve what she needs this time, but ask Melody, because I'm pretty sure we don't have to do this.
I don't think she has to come for this.
I don't think you have to do this. Let's ask Melody about this, because I...
It's earmarked.
Well, yeah, because I mean, it's restricted.
And Stephanie, I figured that this on my own, which is what we're doing, will probably do her.
The rest of the year?
Yeah.
And maybe it may be a case to where we can't put all of it, you know, they don't wanna pull all, let me just put a certain amount to last the rest of the year so it stays in the bank account. Just ask Melody, because I know she knows how this works. Just ask her and see what we can do. So we'll go ahead and approve, move the amount that you need, and hopefully we get to where you don't have to do this.
But the key is, if it is a donation for an intended purpose, she should have the right to spend that money. The council did not budget that, it's not the council's money to budget. We're just holding it in trust until she needs to spend it.
Right, I know it, but we put something in place that I know...
It's just procedural, we have it due, so it's, everybody's on the same page. It's because you're increasing your budget when she does that.
Yeah, but it's not with our money though.
It's not with our money.
That's the thing, yeah.
We're still increasing the budget, that's what I'm talking about a while ago.
Alright.
No, we're not increasing the budget, we're authorizing expenditure of funds as in a separate account, it's not in the budget.
It's a separate account.
We're not talking about the budget, we're not increasing the budget.
But we're having to put it in the budget.
But you don't need to spend, you don't need to put it in the budget to spend it, you need to pay it out of the restricted account.
Ask Melody so she can tell us how this needs to be done, so that way there aren't any animals that are waiting for us.
It doesn't need to be transferred, yeah.
Alright, and the next one is yours too, Stephanie. It says to discuss pre-rapies exposure, pro-falaxis vaccinations for staff to present... for staff to present.
Yeah, so this is something that's really concerned me since I came on board. Um, and the last two years, we've had an increase of rabies, active rabies in this community. And we already have it again this year. It's, it's been found in the number of bats. And so the problem is that when we have feral cats that, you know, go after that and then the dogs. So, um, as you know, once you are exposed to this, you only have about twelve to fourteen days. Once you have flu-like symptoms, you're done. And so the vaccine is a, you know, preventative measure. Um, the alternative to that, and I can tell you, and I don't mean this in a threat anyway, but I can tell you that our families are very nervous about this. And if something were to happen to us, repercussions to you all and the city would be massive.
So where, so have you already, um, have you already, I guess, set some stuff up? You got some prizes?
I've spoken, um, I've made a number of phone calls a year ago when I last brought this up in the department head meeting. Um, the locally, Pusso Valley does offer it. Everyone's about eight hundred dollars per staff member. It's a two-shot vaccine, um, and it does last a couple of years. So I would just feel better, we've had some really crazy animals in there. And we've, we've already had three bite, you know, and what comes next. So I just, I, I think we're fine with firing here not to do it.
And you said it's, it's a mech, you said it's a vaccine?
It's a, it's a two-shot vaccine.
It only lasts for two years?
Couple, couple, three years, I believe.
So? And that's the only place that does it in town? Is the hospital?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a common vaccine at all?
I could try, like calling, broadening my search. Um, I called all the way to Atlanta a couple of, I mean, when I first started, um, cause I was really concerned about it.
And I guess, I guess insurance and?
They don't cover it at all.
And the health department doesn't operate either right now? Um, I mean, we don't wanna get in a situation to need it and not have it. And how many employees do you have?
I mean, I, we, we could try to do it where it's just like key employees, like animal control, myself, I help them. Um, it could be if you wanted to start that way where it's just key employees, um.
Do they wanna take the vaccine? Do they wanna take this vaccine?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think so, yeah, I think so too. And especially too with, um, and maybe full-time employees too.
I mean, you've got other first responders and other departments that get different vaccines for different exposures. And this is, I mean, this is, once you still have the signs, you're done.
All right, so is this something you're gonna try to, you wanna get done now or you're waiting for us? You want us to budget it next time, like hardly?
Let me, let me get a definitive number on paper. I'd feel better if I had something from them on paper. This is altered by phone in the last few days. So let me do that and then back to you. Um, and we can maybe budget it again for, I can be six.
Yeah, well, just, yeah, just make sure you have that. And I guess if we're all in agreeance that this is something that we're gonna consider, you're probably, I would like to know how soon they can even get this done. How does that even work?
How soon and how much?
And how many employees that you're, um, asking to have?
Five, five, so it'll be important.
So are they all five full-time?
Yeah.
All right. All right. You got anything else, Stephanie?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, that looks like that's everything.
A question before we.
Yours looks different from mine.
I have no idea. But this refers in the agenda to Silicaga Little League softball. I thought it was Silicaga Youth League. Were you using the right name or am I wrong?
Kevin, what's y'all's official name?
It's Silicaga Youth Softball.
So, Silicaga Youth Softball for, for the agenda.
And that's what the other contractors have run to in these states.
Yes, ma'am.
So?
Silicaga Youth Softball.
So do, we don't, do we even need to do anything since we're just waiting for the contract for next time? Do we even need to do anything or we're just gonna authorize him to enter into?
I guess you could have, you can vote to approve us to enter to an agreement with them.
Because it's agreements with Parks and Rec, not with?
All right, yeah. All right, so, so number seventeen is gonna come off as well, um, because Stephanie's gonna come back with some numbers.
Some other part fifteen?
Um, actually, it's necessary to approve the week to be read. It's gonna have to say to approve parking rights to enter into, right? Right?
And one other question?
To enter, oh. Into. All right. Okay.
You said we're taking off the item to prove the expenses for the leadership Silicaga classes, uh, because it's budgeted. In all other instances, every year we have approved this. Not, so I'm not comfortable with just letting it get done because it's budgeted.
And that's another thing.
Bring the names back to you to approve that.
So you're gonna put it on next time? Cause that's what we usually do. We do approve the names. And that's, that's what it is. Even though it's a budgeted position, we still have to say who the person is.
I think they have to move it to pay for it.
Yeah, but we need to know, yeah, we need to know who the names are. That's, that's what it is.
Yep, that's what we always done.
So what number is that?
That was number, we took it off. It was.
It'll be on the next one when I have.
It was number.
Just make sure the names are on, all right. And we decided that the minutes were okay? The latest?
Yes, they're okay.
It was one other one that was coming off. Uh, Kathy, your thing wasn't on here to be voted on tonight, was it? What number is it? That's what I'm looking for.
Number ten.
Number ten? That's what I was looking for. That, that one's coming off. Yes. All right. So we removed number ten. We amended fifteen and we took off, um, number seventeen.
And number sixteen?
Number sixteen? Yeah, and number sixteen. So we amended fifteen, took off sixteen, took off seventeen and took, and removed ten.
And then there's the, the B O E is not on that stick.
And the, and the payroll is good, right? It'll be on next time?
Next year.
So the, the, the payroll is always on our first agenda, our first meeting in the month. Why, why is it, why do we not have it today?
Payroll is not complete for the last week of May. It's not even been all happy.
How can we pay payroll if we don't approve it?
Payroll was paid prior to approval.
Right, that you did. Is that why?
Why, why, why is this different? Why is this agenda different? What, you got it to where I'm signing the bag and then your certification, you're signing it? Like, what's, what's up with that?
That was, don't worry about that. I don't know why it's on there.
All right, okay. So we're, I'm gonna mark through this.
Yes.
I'm not gonna sign that.
Madam President, I have some discussion items if, uh, you've got just a minute.
I do. Just wanna make sure we got the, um, the agenda ready. And this is the agenda y'all picked up. These are the changes, the, the things that are gonna be considered tonight. So these are the changes of the things that are gonna come off. So you guys don't be surprised.
The new people that picked one up probably already have the, um, leadership Silicaga from it and the whole recommendation.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, go ahead, lady.
Um, on the, our agenda for the, um, May twenty-second, the minutes, Ms. Shannon, uh, number six, we've got five yeas and nine nays. That probably needs to be corrected. Okay, yes, ma'am. And then at the top it says agenda instead of, uh, minutes. We might wanna kind of write that in or, uh, add that or something before we can approve. We need to make those changes. Uh, I think me and Mr. Perry have both have been contacted by, uh, some members of, of the Marble City Cemetery Committee League. And, uh, what they're wanting to do, uh, council, is Mr. Bill Nichols is buried out there. They want to put a flag and a flagpole at his head marker to represent him. And I think that if you guys approve, I think if we can get it pushed to the next, get it on the next agenda and to get it paid for, maybe we can get it done before the Fourth of July. If that's something that, uh, you guys would like to do, I know I would like to do it. I remember hearing Ms. Peyton and Mr. Green and Mr. Brewer and some others talk about it. Some of those have reached out to me to see if we could possibly do that at our next meeting.
Absolutely. I, I'm in agreement with it.
And the only reason I'm bringing this up, guys, because I was contacted and the cemetery is in my district. So I felt like I kinda needed to.
And there is roughly eighty thousand dollars-ish in the, the funds that, that, that we hold for that.
That's right. That's right. That's right. And council, I would also like for us, I've, uh, talked to some of those ladies and gentlemen and they would like to start back the Marble City Cemetery Committee. And I would like for us to look at re-establishing that. And I would like to be the liaison with them or serve with them, cause I do have some family members out there. Like I said, that is in the third district. So if we could add that to the agenda, at least discuss, approve the flagpole and the flag for Congressman Nichols. And if we can discuss that and get it on the next agenda, I'd be much appreciated.
Shannon, you made notes that have the added minutes together.
Uh, number three, uh, did we ever find Ms. Hertz, uh, paperwork that we've been looking for?
I have a copy of the entire, everything that was turned into the.
Everything she's been looking for.
And everything that we got back from the insurance company. And that's what I've got.
Okay, good.
I do have her copy.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Uh, when?
Yes, sir.
How are you, sir? Good. It's come to my attention that there's been several city employees in different departments that has been asked to sign non-disclosure forms, okay? Now, I know we're trying to be as transparent as possible being a municipality. But we are dealing with taxpayer money and we are dealing with things that are not private, okay? So in my mind, has anyone asked you about this? Do you know anything about this? Okay, is this legal for a municipality to even do? That you can't talk to the council, you can't talk to anybody? The people that are being asked to sign this?
Employees.
Employees of the city.
City employees.
It's only the finance department that is being asked and it's been done for years.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. And I know that's a day-to-day operation. And I'm not trying to step on your toes, Mr. Mayor, I'm not. We have been harping and people have been on us about transparency. And now we want to do non-disclosures. That, that is not good. If you get a non-disclosure form, I encourage you to not sign it because you work for the citizens of this community, just like we do. Everybody that puts on a city badge, a shirt, drives a vehicle, we work for the people of Silicaca.
And speaking of vehicles, Mayor, I wanted to ask, I know we.
I'm not familiar with this. I don't know. I didn't think you was, sir. I'm sorry. Or I would call you.
Is this a, how long has this practice been going on? For years?
This is my first time. I've never.
Okay. Is it about employees' personal information?
We don't have, we don't have access to that.
No, I was just saying, I guess, at the, like in our department upstairs, there are things we can't discuss. If we get a call in about a new development, we can't discuss that with the public until those people are ready for it to go up.
But is general non-disclosure not a part of the employee manual interment, regular policy?
It is, but we all have signed and have something in our files where we've signed.
There's a new, there's a new non-disclosure agreement that was presented under the mayor's name, given to all employees in the administration department.
It was signed, yeah, it was signed by the mayor.
And the mayor's name.
But Shannon, what you're speaking of are specific things. Specific things you can't discuss. But your actual job, I mean, we work for the people. How, how can you sign N D As when we work for the people? These are taxpayers' dollars. They have a lot.
Things you can't discuss.
But so these are N D As for specific things?
I know that in the building department it is.
Well, but you're in the clerk's department now. You're in the finance department now. So what about?
Not sign one, because they're all new employees. Everybody else has signed one.
Yeah, I've never heard that. So you said it's been done for years in the finance department.
I know that Sandy has one in the file that's been in there for several years.
I've never heard of that.
I've, I've never heard. It just come to my attention walking on the sidewalk. So that's the only reason I'm a president. Then I verified it with some folks. Number two, Mr. Mayor, now you, you can help me on this. On accounts payable, we're paying Richardson accounting one thousand forty-five dollars. And I'm assuming on Richardson accounting, you know, uh, the court's got that, uh, an employee that we agreed to keep for six months and we were paid. Well, it's been well over six months and we're still paying. I think it's time. Yes, sir. Well, it's time for their extension. And under the civil service board rules, it says they're supposed to already be back for extension. So we probably need to get with them and if they're gonna extend it, cause I think they're full right now. I think they've reached, um, compassion. Yes, or so.
And that's being paid out of the judicial admin fund, isn't it?
Well, it still says the civil service board rules.
No, I know. I was just asking, is that being paid out of their judicial admin fund or?
But if it's being paid out of that, that's another one of those accounts like Mel's that was set up to where it wasn't gonna come through our, um, accounts payable. So maybe this is another, um, mistake that we're running into. Because if this is being paid out of that judicial admin fund, it shouldn't show up on our.
Right. And that's something that I've asked before. Shannon, both of those?
Yeah, cause I know that, um, for the last several, um, maybe I've not stood on that.
I, I just know civil service board says six months.
Right, right.
We just need to follow up a little bit.
All right, and you done?
Madam President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Speaking of vehicles, um, Mr. Mayor, I know a few meetings ago, it was probably been a couple of months ago, we asked that, um, we had a list of employees that were gonna drive vehicles home. And I know, um, the fire chief's car was on that list and he was supposed to receive a stipend. But it's been brought to my attention that he's still driving the car home. And the car was parked at the Weetumpa, it's been, he's been driving it to the Weetumpa, Weetumpa Fire Station. So our city vehicle was being parked there and his other.
I don't know about Weetumpa. I know that he does have that command center with him, twenty-four seven.
But he's using it to commute to his other job. And we paid for that car and we paid for the gas.
Other than what he does, other than what he does.
Did I make it off? So.
Come, you can come to the, um, podium, Chief.
So, then I, my part-time employment with the Weetumpa Fire Department, I'm a part-time firefighter. I carry no rank. I carry no, um, uh, carry no, you know, formality there. Uh, I've never kept that a secret. So there are times when they are short-staffed, when I will help fill in and cover for their shifts if they're, if they're, you know, in need of personnel, where I will leave here at five or five-thirty or whenever I leave the office. And instead of driving home, I will drive to the fire station.
That's, that's my problem.
There. Now, it is closer for me to go directly there and directly back here than it is for me to go to my house.
But that's still.
And in addition to that, as a part-time employee, that is a secondary job and that is a common occurrence in the fire service. If you are a part-time firefighter with another department, you, one is primary, one is secondary. There had, there have been two occasions.
But you're the fire chief.
There have been two occasions where I have left there to come back here because of an incident overnight.
But even if you are at home, you still would've had to leave there and come back. And I hope even if you were at your part-time job, you would've put us at the top of the list.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
You still had to come. But the problem is, for one, we ask that you not drive the car and you be, you receive the stipend. But two, you're driving that car that the city pays for, I mean, insurance, gas, tires, maintenance, everything. You're driving it to another fire station.
Well, if, if y'all would like me to, uh, rather than taking the shortest distance from point A to point B and back and take the longer distance and drive more gas and more tires, then I, I'll do that.
But it, but it sounds like, and I, and I'm not trying to sound mean when I say this. It sounds like you're trying to make your personal stuff my, my problem.
Not at all. I'm, I have calculated the cheapest, fastest, shortest route for, for the transportation of that vehicle. And it has nothing to do with personal. It has to do with me having access to that vehicle and spending the least amount of fuel and the least amount of wear and tear and anything else you wanna add to the list. It has nothing to do with personal and I, and I, I do not, like, there are occasions, not, not very often, but there have been some occasions where I have, you know, gone. but there have been some occasions where I have, you know, gone and worked on a weekend shift. I do not take my truck if I'm working on a weekend shift, 'cause I'm going from my house, not from here. So that, that makes no sense economically to do so.
But it also makes sense for it to just stay here where it can be utilized.
Like the council, I- And, and we, we've had, I mean, the, the answer to that is the same, if it's parked here, it's going to be parked here and it's not going to be used.
Because that's how you have it set up, but it can be used, I mean, it, and we had this conversation too, because I asked whether there's some sort of, sort of special circumstances to where it was just fitted for you and where you're the only person who can drive it, and the answer was no. So as long as it's at the department, anybody can use it, right?
Anybody could, but in a, in an emergency incident, during the response of an emergency incident, that vehicle is not going to get taken when a fire truck needs to be there with water on it.
Well, we shouldn't deny.
No, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm an open book, and I wish you would've come and, and talked to me before bringing it up.
Well, that's, well, we've been talking about transparency, it's been everywhere, I just want to make sure we're transparent and we're doing things in the work session where they should be handled.
I mean, I, I've repeatedly said, if you have questions or concerns with the department, you have my phone number, my office door's open.
That's what I did, yeah, that's what I did. So Mayor, so are we, I mean, so how are we gonna handle this, or will he just still be allowed to drive the truck, you know, to his other?
I always believed that, that the fire chief may maintain the command vehicle at all times, 'cause he got communication not only in Solocaga, but El Vega County, and El County's around if the case of emergencies, but I always believed that. Now, what other use it's been used for, I don't know, it's, uh...
But I don't think we need to single out one department, I think we need to look at all the departments who's implemented take-home vehicle programs that didn't come before us.
Well, that's a Solocaga police car parked at Children'sburg Police Station.
We're gonna have a conversation.
I'm gonna have a problem with this.
Children'sburg police car parked down here in Solocaga.
Well, that's Children'sburg's problem.
I know.
But, I mean, I think we need to look at it as a whole, rather than single out one department.
The main thing that he's got the accessibility to any emergency, whether it's fire or, or active nature.
So you're basically saying that you're just gonna, you know, he's gonna keep driving the car, and you don't have a problem with him driving it to his other job?
I have no problem with them other jobs, but if you restrict him from using that vehicle?
We already, we did that months ago.
You want to put that in writing, sign off on it, we were forced-
It is, it is in writing, it's already in writing. It was along with, um, some other people too, I think everybody else on it, they're, you know, they did what they were supposed to be, do, but the, uh, fire chief didn't do it.
I know you restricted the, the, building code, you know?
Yeah.
Cut back on their ability to get on site, so.
But that isn't, that didn't affect their ability to get on site, they just can't take the cars home.
Yeah, they have to go back here and go back out there.
But they have to show up to work anyway, that, that doesn't make any sense, they, people have to come to work, we're not, it's not our job to provide people rights to work.
It's something they've been doing for years and years.
But just because they've done it for years and years doesn't make it right.
You, you don't want them to use it?
They can use the cars, that's what they're there for, they use them during working hours.
But we need to look at other people as well, if we're gonna, I don't think it's fair to single out any first responders. I don't think that they, we don't understand what they do, 'cause we don't work in that field. We don't understand what their needs are, because we're not in that position.
But what can you, what can you do that far away in an emergency?
I mean, I don't know, I can't answer that, but I think that it's fair to, um-
What are we gaining by cutting it out?
Yeah, what, what, what good is it doing for our people?
We're saving on gas, maintenance, tires, we're paying for that stuff.
But what about the other people driving vehicles who do not live in this area?
We've wasted a lot of money over the years, you know, and that's not even a drop in the bucket, but, uh...
Okay.
But I just worry about first responders need all the material they have to, they have to have to make leave to react to you.
And it's also part of the contract, that he's not supposed to have a second job.
If you put it out, if you're strict about this, we'll have to bypass it.
Alright, well, it's already in writing, we've already done that. Is there anything else anybody wants to add, anybody seen any other police cars parked anywhere?
I think that's for the mayor to address.
Well, no, that's us, that's our, that's our job, we're the one that, we have to check it out, we have to find it, like, yeah, that's our problem.
But I just wanna say it fair, for all first responders, I, I don't want to single off just a certain group.
That's great, we got the police, you know, with their own vehicles, they're very taken care of, and also their responses, and immediately, no matter what happens in the city, they can respond from home and damn if you call in, whether on duty or off duty.
Okay.
Protection of the people is our main goal.
Alright, that's all I have.
I don't think we need to put a price tag on that, we need to support them, and back them everywhere we can, yeah.
But there still needs to be certain stipulations on it.
Well, it's an issue with the council, and-
Yeah, there still needs to be certain stipulat- stipulations on it, especially with the distance that the vehicle is being taken and the vehicle being used to go to another job.
Yeah, Shannon, I have it in the record, and we'll bypass it, let the governor just trip.
Okay, I don't have anything else, does anybody else have anything else on the work session?
No, ma'am.
Alright, so we'll go ahead, in our work session, we will take a five-minute break, and begin the council meeting at six P.M.